Good evening and welcome to the March 11th, 2024 study meeting of Livonia City Council. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by the Honorable Jim Jolly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,989th regular meeting. I feel like we're back in the eighties and that's fun, so I'm going to be moving on to the nineties next time, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, March 20th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that Councilwoman Toy has left, so we are at six. Moving on to audience communication, the council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Martin?
Good evening, and I could fill that role up there if need be, okay? But Christopher Martin and the great state of Michigan. I want to talk, this happened several weeks ago, and it was the committee of the whole meeting, and this was related to the senior center. It's up on the second floor. The air conditioning was very nice up there at the time, and I can say, though, that the people that did the display, I'm going to talk about that a little bit, so the people know where their money is going and to what cause it's going. But there was two blueprints that was put up during this display, both about a three by five, which is what you'd have in front of your house if you had an American flag. And to give you some perspective, the young female architect, she stood right in front of the thing, and unless young Mr. Donavick and Laura Toy, who are both on that committee in charge of that, had x-ray vision, you couldn't see through her. Then the architect sat down, and up comes the contractor, and he does the exact same thing. And then he sat down, and we had a city employee come up and do the exact same thing, stand in front of it. And it was alarming in the fact that nobody said, who were up there in attendance, said, hey, why don't you get out of the way, so we can see what you're attempting to display to us, okay, as members of council? And so in looking at that, I came to the conclusion that, and when I stated at the time, that you guys make a better door than a window, that's because they were standing in the way. And I realized maybe not all of you understood what I was referencing there. But for 79 cents at Menards, I'm going to put out a plug for Menards, they could have got this and held it up. I have never attended anything that was that poorly done. And I've been at a lot of meetings, especially union meetings and different events, but that was just horrible. And the contractor said, well, he does a lot of work for the other municipalities. And I can understand, because the average Joe would have said, get out of the way. Can't see through you, okay? So I anticipate that this is going to be a big mess when this is constructed over there, because if I have to rely on that presentation, and millions of dollars are going to be spent on that, these are the wrong crew to have over there, period. And I feel so confident that it's the wrong crew.
That's timeless, Martin.
We need to bring that clock back.
Thank you, sir.
Just for the record, the remote and the controls, or the directions have gone missing.
Oh, it's been sabotaged.
I think it was from Menards. I'm messing with you. Thanks, Mr. Martin. Yeah, I hear you. All right, council, so I'd just like to point out, we do have new data on received for item number three. Now I'm going to go to council if we have any announcements.
I'd just like to respond to Mr. Martin briefly and let residents know, if you didn't already, when you look at our council packets on our website, you can select our meetings, it'll have just the PDF listed, and the top corner, it does say the agenda. Our agenda packet includes all of the materials that we're looking at here on our tablets or even our phones. You can do that as well at home. So some of the materials that'll be projected on screens, you don't have to be present to see them. So just in case people didn't know that, I wanted to make sure they did.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bezinski. Anything else from council? Seeing none. We are going to move right into the study agenda with new business, item number one, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Robert Urban, the traffic operations engineer from MDOT, in conjunction with the old M-14 reconstruction project from Newburgh Road to Market Street, beginning in the spring of 2025. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. Robert Urban cannot be here, so I'm taking his place. I'm Jeff Horn with MDOT.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, great, thank you. So MDOT has an exciting project coming up in 2025. We are going to completely rebuild Ann Arbor Road from Market Street to Newburgh Road. So it's about a half-mile section. We are also going to rebuild the bridges. You have the Middle Rouge River Bridge and also the Heinz Drive Bridge. So in order to keep that job on schedule and on track, we are simply requesting a waiver for the noise ordinance for that construction project. Livonia also has a job coming up in '25 to rebuild Newburgh Road. So we need to get our job done and over with, so you guys can come through and build your job.
Council Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we always appreciate you coming to play by the rules, for lack of a better way of putting it. Can you detail the timeline of the project specifically, like just a broadscape of like when you anticipate starting, when you anticipate finishing, and what hours of operation you would be shooting for during the day, hopefully, and not into the night, correct? Or if you are, tell us.
Not correct. So, okay, so we anticipate starting, we have to have the trees cleared by April 15th. That's due to Indiana regulations restrictions. So we're going to start clearing the trees in the wintertime, start road construction probably mid-April, and then finish up November, mid-November. So Ann Arbor Road will be completely closed for several months, probably about six months. So you know, you have that triangle there, you have Ann Arbor Road, Newburgh, and Plymouth Road, so two legs will be open, and then Ann Arbor Road will be shut down completely. We are going to rebuild the roadway, rebuild the bridges. Now, MDOT specifications require us to pour the bridge decks at night, so we have to pour the bridge decks, build the bridge decks at nighttime. We don't anticipate much other work happening at night, but there could be. We don't know at this time. You know, we're going to write in our contract, no demoing the bridge at nighttime, no driving sheet piles at nighttime. So we are going to limit some of the noise and some of the work operations, but again, this road's going to be closed for about six months. Contractors, they really don't like working at night. You got to bring in night lighting, it's more expensive, you got to pay your employees premium time, you know, a certain premium nighttime hour wage. So it's cheaper, it's better quality to build it during the day, but there are certain regulations that we have to follow to build it at night for the bridges.
Thank you, I appreciate the perspective. I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Well, you have an approving on consent, so if you'd like to join us, feel free to be here that next meeting, if not, your matter's all absurd to be approved.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too. Moving on to item number two, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from David Pecarelli to host a graduation party with a DJ at his home at 1-888-91-ASpen Drive on Friday, June 14th, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. David Pecarelli, 1-888-91-ASpen Drive. Third party every two years I'm here. I invited you last time. You're welcome to join us. We're just looking to make sure that as our neighbors and everybody's having a good time, that there wouldn't be any issues with the noise. We don't anticipate one. We haven't had one in the past, so we'd like to continue.
Awesome. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have any neighbor support, or are they invited?
They are all invited to the party.
Okay, that's all I wanted to check. I'd be happy to offer approval on consent.
So you have an approving on consent. Mr. Donavick, are you still banned, or are you able to join this year?
My band is booked that night.
All right. All right, so you do have, is there anything else further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Sir, you're on the consent agenda. Have a great time, and hopefully, one of us will stop by and party along.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number, item number three, which is a request to extend waiver use approval from the current owner. This is Linda Shane. This is petition 2014-10-02-14 submitted by Elite Foot Spa to continue operating a massage establishment on the property located on the southeast corner of Plymouth and Stark Roads in the northeast section of 33. Who is bringing forth this item? Anyone from administration, or here's the petitioner?
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good.
Name and address for the record.
I'm the current owner, my name's Edmund Leon. I'm here to accept the waiver use transfer.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, the operations and how you got to this point going forward?
She's actually my aunt-in-law, but currently, I'm in the process of divorce, and I'd just like to separate myself from the business as well.
Okay, so it's still going to be the same ownership and just transferring you out of this?
Yes.
Okay. Council, do I have direction?
Can we talk to the person that's being transferred to?
Yes.
Oh, my name's Ashiri, and I met most of you guys before, from Yo-Yo Spa. And this is my friend, her name's Linda Shen, or Xiaoping Shen, Chinese name. And she is the current general manager in the spa. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. So will you be the new owner we're transferring to, or the person next to you?
It's actually Xiaoping. I am just here for translation.
Okay. And does your client or friend, do they have all the state documents and everything that would allow her to operate an establishment like this and be licensed for it?
Yes, she does have the spa license for therapy, license from the Michigan State.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything further from council? If I could, just to get this through, so right now, the current license is under the current owner, he's just, the only change we're making is removing him off of that, but she's continuing to stay on, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So there's no change, other than we're removing the one gentleman off?
Correct. Edmund Leon is the, yeah, the gentleman, the gentleman who is the LFC owner, yes.
Mr. Jolly?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I'm going to ask a little bit, in a way that makes more sense to me, just real quick to understand it. Sir, you are the current owner, you're leaving the business, and you're, you want to transfer it to who is now your aunt-in-law, correct?
Former aunt-in-law, yes.
Was she a co-owner with you?
Just manager.
Okay, so she is assuming a new ownership role in the business, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so she was not previously an owner?
No.
Okay. So just because you are most familiar with this, can you tell us, how long has this business been operating?
Three years now, currently.
Okay, have you had any kind of problems with any kind of regulatory agencies, or the Livonia Police?
No, no issues at all.
No issues at all?
Nope.
Okay. And does she, and I'm sorry, through the translator, maybe that's not, you don't have to answer this, other than operating this particular facility, is there any kind of past ownership she has had of some sort of similar entity, a massage parlor, or clinic, or something like this?
What are we doing here?
Translating.
I think it's about eight months ago that she established the name of the business, Yo-Yo Spa. It's only this name, but we never operate, and she never operated, was because within the 400 feet from daycare, which is a pool, and the name of the business only established, but she never been operated or doing anything since the city has been deliled due to the 400 feet daycare.
Okay, so, Mr. President, at this time, I'll offer an approving for the regular agenda, based on, I think it's appropriate that we give more scrutiny to certain types of businesses. So I want to give us an opportunity to just look into the license transfer a little bit more, and we'll come back at the next regular meeting, and we'll vote on the matter, okay?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
To the administration, to law, do we know if we've received any correspondence from our departments, or residents, or businesses in regard to this petition, this item?
I have just heard of some possibility, I believe Madam Clerk can speak to it a little bit more than I could.
There were two letters left. One was addressed to Laura Toy, one was addressed to the hearing director about this business. It was handwritten, it was taped to the employee's door with a lanyard, and it was signed by a whistleblower. The police department now has both of those letters. That was received this morning at 7:00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
So I will offer an approving and a denying for the regular. Did anybody take, I'm sorry, Mr. President, may I hit the floor? So did anybody take any kind of photocopies of those letters at all, or the information?
We are going through security training for election officials, and one of the things we're going through this week was fentanyl. So we were advised only to open the one letter, which I did. We did take photographs of it. I never opened the second letter.
Okay, and that makes sense. Okay, so we'll look into getting some information from the police department, and we'll go from there.
Yes, so we have an approving and a denying right now, and we're going to be obviously lurking over some stuff before the next regular meeting. So those are the two motions on the table. We'll probably see you back here in a couple weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything else from the audience? Oh, we do have an audience. Please make your way to the podium, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Craig Gonzalez, 42341 Amboy Court, Northville. I am the manager of this plaza for George Demopolis. I've been there for about 14 years. George owns Senate Plaza and the Senate Coney Island, and something got lost in translation back there. Linda has been operating and at the spa for eight years. And it's now that we signed an extension with her for another three years, but she's been there for eight years, previously with a boyfriend that they started the spa with, and then she's been the day-to-day operations. You have asked if she had previous experience, and it got a little bit gerbil. We would like to see her to continue on as our tenant, and we have full faith in her that she could operate the spa. And to the best of our knowledge, there hasn't been any problems with the spa and issues before in the past. I think there was one incident about five years ago, four or five years ago, but I don't think it bore out anything on the ownership of it, more so than an employee, a rogue employee that was there.
So, well, thank you very much for the clarification. Right now, we do have an approving and a denying, so we'll jump into more matter on the regular meeting. Thank you. Any other audience communication regarding this matter? Seeing none. We will move on to item number four, which is the appointment of a magistrate for the 16th District Court. This comes to us from the 16th District Court, administrative order number 2811, appointing Paul Burnier as magistrate pursuant to Public Act 16 of the Public Acts of 1976.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Kathleen McCann, 19897 Myron, Livonia. Nice to see you all.
Good to see you.
Natalie Storchewsko, 33031 Brookside Court, Livonia.
Awesome. So you're here to talk on behalf of Paul?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know, I know. He is a huge loss to the city, and I understand that, but he will be a boon to the court. And we, honestly, I have had the privilege and the pleasure to have many terrific magistrates at our court, one of whom you may know. I will tell you that Judge Kavanaugh was there. We've been very fortunate to have great magistrates during my very limited tenure there. As much as I hate to say this, they're going to probably kick me out before long, so nothing I can do about that, but I do hope to keep the court in good hands. And I think that between Paul Burnier and Roger Spence, who is here today, if you would just wave your hand, I can tell you that I believe each of them will do a great job. You know Paul Burnier's history, you know what a great individual he is, and how well-versed he is in the law. He would make an excellent magistrate. I can tell you also, am I reverberating? There is, if you knew Roger Spence, I don't know how many of you do, but he is one of the people that put together the MIDC program for indigent defense, and has done a phenomenal job of instructing other attorneys and helping us all get through that program. He and Brian Krego, and there's a few others, but they all did a phenomenal job. I have utmost confidence, having had Roger appear before me for, I don't know, probably since he first became a lawyer, from the way my life is going. At any rate, we've been very fortunate. We hope to continue that path and to have people of quality in that position, so that our, the public gets served in the best manner they can. And I'll turn it over to my court administrator.
I believe my judge said it all, did my job, so we will let you ask us any questions if you wish.
It is great to have both of you here tonight. Thanks for spending the evening. Sorry that the study got a little bit further, but we were partying during the regular, but as always, it's a pleasure to have you. Thank you so much. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Jolly.
Thank you.
Judge Natalie, thank you very much. You're both the best leaders the court could possibly ask for, and you're handing it off to Paul, who we know as the city attorney, but many of us probably don't know that he was also the state prosecuting attorney assigned to Livonia for many years before he became the city attorney. So he has, through and through, been through the court and added all kinds of positives. Roger Spence, though, is probably less known, but I can attest that Roger is an excellent attorney, an excellent person, has longstanding in the community. We all ask Paul questions on a continuing basis, and he gives us great legal advice. Roger's been providing that to private clients for 25, 30 years. Doing some kind of sign language, but from a personal note, I'll note that when I was a court officer, and I was studying for the bar and filling out character and fitness and all this kind of stuff, Roger was one of these people who I called upon to say, well, Roger, what does this mean? How does this work? What should, how should I answer this question? So there's no hesitation at all from me offering a motion of support for the consent agenda for both, we'll say Paul now, but I look forward to doing it for Roger in two minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Anything else we can answer?
We've got, right now, you have an approving on consent, so I think you're looking pretty good right now. Council, do you have anything else to say on the current number four, which is Mr. Burnier?
We're not going to offer denying for Mr. Burnier?
I'd like to meet him, I'd like to learn more about him.
He might just quit.
Well, nothing else from council. Do we have any audience communication on item number four? Seeing none. So we have an approving on consent for Mr. Burnier, and now we will move on to item number five, which is the appointment of a part-time magistrate to the 16th District Court, appointing Roger Spence to a part-time magistrate. The floor is back to you, if you want to, Judge, or?
I can, Mr. Spence, I want you to come up and be introduced.
Thank you, Judge. Your client's name, your honor, everyone? I'm sorry? Your client's name? That's 37 years, actually, practicing law, Jim. I've been doing it a long, long time.
You could still be my son.
My wife and I, who's in the audience tonight, reside at 32210 Myrna. She's a lifelong Livonia resident. I'm a transplant from Grand Rapids to Michigan State to Detroit to Livonia. And I've, we've lived here 20, 30 years?
32.
A long time, a long time. I do a lot of predominantly criminal work, I do do a small amount of collection work, all criminal defense work. I enjoy what I do, predominantly done criminal or public defender work. I just think that's a vital area that needs more attention than it receives. The Michigan Indigent Defense Commission did implement several rules four years ago in the spring of '19. Took a lot of work to work those into the court system and get them, make sure we comply with them and do what we're supposed to do. And I continue participating. I'm participating through May, and as much as we're hoping to start part-time in June, I believe, if things go as expected, you know, I'll continue doing the public defender work in the other courts, but needless to say, I can't do any practicing, all private or public defender in Livonia. So I feel very honored to have the opportunity to serve, and I'm looking very much forward to it. I'll be there all day tomorrow doing the public defender work.
There you go. We're, again, happy to have everybody here for these last two items. I'm going to give it back to Mr. Jolly.
Motion to approve on consent. Thank you, Roger.
Honestly, these are two items that are value, huge immense value adds for the city of Livonia, so great choices. Look forward to seeing you continue to work with Livonia. Again, thank you for being here, and the items are both on consent, so if you want to come back and hang out, you can. If not, it was great seeing you all.
Thank you. And we appreciate all of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, oh, yes, I already went to the audience. Item number six, which is a request, request permission from Wayne County to close a portion of Farmington Road to host Livonia's annual Memorial Day Ceremony. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President McCullough. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking, we're seeking council's approval to make a request to Wayne County for a permit to temporarily close Farmington Road, north and southbound from Five Mile to Roycroft. I'd be happy to answer any questions council has on this item.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, no questions. You do this every year, so approving and consent, please.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Any from the audience? Seeing none. You're on the consent. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is a request to approve the holiday parade and tree lighting on Sunday, December 8th. Mr. Davis?
Thank you again, Council President McCullough. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. It's a road closure day in Parks and Recreation, what can I tell you? Making plans for the parade, December 8th, 2024, asking again for Wayne County to close Farmington Road from Linden to Five Mile between the hours of 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. for the parade. Happy again to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Councilman Morgan?
No questions. Once again, we do this every year. You do a fine job, thank you. Approving and consent, please.
Yeah. Vice President has brought up, can you work on the weather this year, please?
I will certainly try my best. If I was powerful enough to control the weather, I'm not saying I wouldn't be here, but I might not, so, but I will do my best.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Anything from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll move on to item eight, which is an award of bid from the Public Works Division for aggregates, which road gravel, slag, and stone for the city's 2024 calendar year requirements from budget funds. Mr. Moore?
Evening, Council. Doug Moore with Department of Public Works. This is our annual request for our material, gravel, rock, sand. There's several bidders on the chart that was provided. The green color was the low bidder, the orangish color was the second low. If the low bidder can't supply, it will go to the second bid. I believe there were a couple that were tied. The decision was we'd alternate between the two on every other purchase.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Council, do I have direction?
Move to approve. Consent?
Consent. We have an approving on consent. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? All right, we got an approving on consent. Let's move on to item number nine, which is award of bid from the Public Works Division for the 2024 right-of-way tree planting program with an option of extending through 2025 season upon mutual agreed from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
So we held a pre-bid meeting on February 13th. We had three contractors there. The bids were opened on February 20th. Crimboley Nursery out of Canton was the low bidder for both years. They've been the tree planting contractor for the last several years. The 2024 program, we've got 240 trees. That's due to issues with our two removal programs kind of coinciding. Next year, we expect 400 to 500 trees to make up for the lower number this year. Crimboley is more than capable of doing the work. They've done a good job for us the last several years.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Vice President?
I would be happy to offer an approving on consent, and we'll just plug that Arbor
Day is coming, April 25th.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Nice. All right, we've got an approving on consent. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? We will move on to item number 10, which is a request for the authorization to purchase one 10-foot flatbed lift gate through the Rochester Cooperative Award Agreement. This has come to us from the Public Works Division. Mr. Moore? The floor is yours again.
So several years ago, council let the department purchase some trucks. They're called swap loaders. The back end can be swapped out amongst many different things. We have a need for a flatbed to haul material, pipe, our trench boxes. They go on the flatbed really well. And then on the back of the flatbed will be a lift gate to aid in getting material up onto the bed. Just the flatbed itself, we've got the truck.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
It's standard vehicle that the city uses on a daily basis. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anything else from counsel? Audience? We have an approving on consent. We'll move on to item number 11, which is a request for the authorization to purchase one transit van, 250 high-roof cargo van utilizing the State of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing. This comes to us from the Public Works Division. Mr. Moore?
So this was actually in the 2023 capital budget due to issues with supply, getting them from Ford. It was pushed to the 2024 budget. It's one of the high-top vans. It's gonna be used in Billy Maintenance Section. The one it's replacing will ultimately go out for auction at some point. It's being bought from Longhammer Ford out of Owasso. The total cost for both the van and the upgrade is $69,627.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel? Mr. Morgan?
Offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent from Mr. Morgan. Anything further from counsel? Anything from the audience? We have an approving on consent. We'll move on to item number 12, which is a request for authorization to purchase one Case 2024 750 M Dozer through the Sourcewell contract. This comes to us from the Public Works Division. Mr. Moore?
So the department is looking to purchase a bulldozer to be used at the Glendale landfill. We've got to start doing a final closure. Our consultant, NTH, is concerned about us starting to do that. In order to do the closure, we need to be able to move the soil around. We have a stockpile of soil. We can get the loader to get it over there. We need to be able to spread it around. We did rent a bulldozer last year for two months. It was rather expensive. I believe it was eight or $9,000 for the two months. We can purchase this bulldozer for 100, I mean, I get it's $187,000 and some change, but in the long run, it will cost less money. And then when it's all said and done, we can look at selling it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel? Mr. Jolly?
We haven't had a bulldozer to this point?
No.
Yeah, I guess I'm just struggling with, I don't, I don't want to second-guess your assessment that we need it, but if we've gone 60 years without it and we need it for one particular project, and we're also, in the same breath of saying we need it, we're also potentially looking at selling it, that doesn't, in my head, it doesn't calculate positively, if that makes sense. Can you give us some more depth?
The issue with the need is it's on the landfill. We've got to move approximately 16 feet of soil in spots, and we have no way to balance it. If you were to go over and see the landfill, the side that faces the firing range is the side that needs the most work. And in that side, we're looking at slopes of currently about 45-degree angle, which has got to be leveled down more. We just don't have a way to move the soil.
Wouldn't that open the door, though, to putting it out for bid? For somebody who owns a bulldozer to, I guess I'm not, and again, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand and defend the purchase, if that makes sense.
The issue with putting it out for bid is we don't really have a scope, a way to write it without, it's something that needs to be done over a long period of time. That's why we were struggling with the rental, because of the way it's coming in and having to get the soil in and doing things. We don't, it's gonna take time, and we just can't quantify the amount of time that it's gonna take to have a vendor come in and do it.
Mr. Moore, I got a quick question just regarding this. So we're doing, with this dozer, you're gonna be doing this work in-house, right?
Yes.
So the ROI, if we were to go out to bid for a project like this, would probably surely go over the amount that we would spend to own this piece of equipment, would you think?
Conceivably, yes.
Considering all engineering and contractual fees, you're probably gonna pay 20 grand alone just for an engineering drawing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bezinski?
Could you clarify the timeline for the need for this? It's...
So the active face is still going. We've got about eight or nine years' worth of airspace calculations before we can, we have to close it. But we can start working on the closure now and just do it in small steps over time, rather than put in nine years' worth of material and then end up having to close it in a heartbeat.
So just to clarify, you're saying that over the next near decade, you'd be using it consistently throughout the year?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Moore, for being here this evening. This area also has a lot of dirt that was dumped back there from the 96 freeway project as well, right?
Yeah, that's down, that's down in Lake Glendale that started filling that area in. This is up on the active face, which is, which if you go, if you're familiar with the area, it's east of where the Waste Management Transfer Station is.
This is a unique project, to your point. It's not something we're gonna do every day immediately, but it's something that the city can get to and over time, as time sees fit and whatnot. So I think it makes sense to purchase the equipment now, take good care of it, and be able to sell it when we've run our course with it. I know there's some questions, so I'm gonna offer approving for the regular in the event that council members have more questions to do now in the next meeting. But I understand the usage of it, and I think it'd be cost prohibitive if we went out and tried to hire a contractor, which would force us to then use that contractor immediately and having to do with the project immediately as opposed to what I think, again, your guys' department is planning is more just over time, take care of this issue, as it's not extremely pressing right now, but we have to take care of it eventually regardless. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. So we do have an approving on the regular. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I have a couple of questions regarding this. Do we have any other pieces of equipment that can do the same job?
No, we do not.
No graders or, you know, dozers or anything like that that can, okay.
The grader that we had, we got rid of in 2003.
Okay. What about, I mean, this leads to another situation, like when we need to move this. Do we have trailers big enough to move this thing?
The, the next thing on the agenda will help move the material across the road, the front-end loader with the big bucket on it. And we've got dump trucks, too.
Okay. But I mean a trailer. If you're, if you're gonna move this to another site besides where it's going, are you gonna leave it?
It's going right across the street. It's going from the south side of Glendale across the street to the north side.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a really quick question. I really don't have any idea on something like this, on this dozer, the depreciation rate for a vehicle like this, I know it's not gonna be the same as a car, and I don't know if you would know that or not.
I, I don't know.
I was just curious if, it's not gonna depreciate, then why not buy it and then sell it? But, okay, I was just trying to, I'll look into that. Thanks.
Anything else from counsel? Seeing none? I'm gonna go to the audience. Mr. Martin?
Yes, if I was sitting up there, yeah, once I got done laughing, I would put in a denying motion on this. I thought Jim had a couple of good questions there, to be, to be really honest. And then, you know, Doug Moore and I see these guys come up and they like to buy these expensive toys. They're not paying for these expensive toys, okay? And he'll be back, as he stated, to get a trailer to move this expensive toy. And as far as reselling these, the amount that they get on these vehicles, when they go over to Telegraph over there and go through an auction, are next to nothing, okay? And so anyway, I wouldn't be in favor of this expensive toy. I would be using a front-end loader myself, and it might take some time, but you're saving a hell of a lot of money in doing that. Plus, he never mentioned, if they've never had a bulldozer, who's gonna train the guy? Okay? Is he gonna have on-the-job training? Oh, here's the key, because that's how it usually works here. Here's the key, go and play around out there, okay, over on Glendale, push stuff around, learn how to use it. That's how it works, if you really know this city, on these expensive toys. So this is just, this is definitely, forget the consent agenda, this is definitely a no vote if I was sitting up there. This is just a waste of money. Seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none? So we are going, we have a, what, an approving on the regular? And then, Mr. Moore, if I may, is there any way that you could prepare or have staff prepare? What you, what else you could use this piece of machinery for? I'm looking more for an ROI, long-term. I understand that the fleet and DPW, I used to kind of do that. So having tools to your disposal are great, as long as we know that they're going to good use. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Nothing else from the audience. We're gonna move on to item number 13, which is a request for the authorization to purchase one Case 2024 Wheel Loader Model 621 XR through the Sourcewell contract. This comes to us from the Public Works Division. Mr. Moore?
So counsel, this will replace a unit that was bought in 2009. The department currently has two wheeled loaders. This is a bigger loader. We decided to go with Case because we have all the current attachments for it. We've got a leaf claw that can be used, we've got forklift for it. And this, the old one will be sent, or we have a quote for a trade-in for $20,000 value on it. The current frontline unit will be moved to the backup unit, and this unit will overtake and be the primary source.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Counsel? Do I have direction?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I'll offer an approving for the regular. Again, as Mr. Moore said, that this item, we already have one, we're replacing it, which is standard practice. When a vehicle reaches its life and they need another one, we purchase it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from counsel? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on the regular?
Thanks.
We are moving on to item number 14, which is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure for the Department of Public Works for the emergency repair of the Vector Truck Number 343 from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
So we currently have a Vector that we can't use because the cyclones, the filters on it have rusted out. It needs to have a repair. The cost is $33,326.27. Vacuum trucks on, vacuum truck rental on Newburgh, which is just south of Schoolcraft, is gonna do the repairs for us. Currently, we're down to one Vector. It's, and we have two. They're used to clean sewer lines. I mean, it's important stuff that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent? Counsel, anything further? Seeing none? Audience? None? We're gonna move on to item number 15, which is a request for the authorization to purchase one air-cooled chiller from the Department of Public Works to replace the temporary chiller at the Bennett Civic Library from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
So counsel, last July, you approved the rental of the unit that's on the, currently on the trailer on the east side of the library. We have a two-year rental on that. This chiller is the permanent rooftop chiller. There is a 32-week lead time, so what we would like to do is purchase it now. The architecture firm is writing the specifications for the bid and everything, so when the contractor comes in, they'll have the chiller here to put on the roof for us.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Counsel?
I'll offer an approving. Mr. President, I got a question.
I'll go to, uh...
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Moore, when do you think that your department or the contractor, excuse me, will start installation of this? I know you said there's a 32-week lead time, and can't wait for that trailer to get removed out there.
The trailer, we have another year rental on it. We're waiting as long as we can, because once we start that up, the clock is ticking on it. So we're kind of gonna push that. 32 weeks puts us, I think, near Christmas, unfortunately.
Spring.
Hopefully, it comes earlier. I would assume winter, early spring, depending on the weather.
Can your contractors install that kind of equipment in the wintertime? Whether it's, I guess, right?
I would, I would assume if there was no snow on the roof, they could do the work. If there's snow on the roof, they're gonna wanna wait.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. Moore, I have a question regarding this, because I may have misunderstood, but when you came to us before regarding putting this temporary chiller out there, it was my understanding that you had ordered the actual roof chiller, and it was just delayed so much that we had to do something in the meantime. Can you maybe elaborate on that? And maybe it was my misunderstanding, but I'd like to, like to know what happened and why we, why we don't have this chiller already.
I have not been involved with the project, so I don't really know what I...
So, if I may, Mr. Morgan, we did, we approved, all we approved was the design work back of last year. So the chiller, this is the process to then have the specification for the chiller itself. The last time we did approve it, it was just for the design fees to pursue the engineering documents, is what I remember.
Okay. And I seem to remember them saying that there was a 32-week lead time on getting a new one, and I thought they were on top of that at that time. But you're saying that there needed to be plans drawn together prior to?
That's why we had the...
Yes.
Because when we had it, it was a two-year contract, and we still have the one left on it, so this should get us there. I do have one question, if you're good?
Yeah.
Are you guys, how did you pick out the chillers? Did you pick out the chiller from the design, the engineer that you're working with, just to make sure?
I believe it was chosen from train because of the specifications that were done for it.
Perfect. All right. We still need a motion, counsel.
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Counsel, is there anything further? Audience? Seeing none? We have an approving on consent. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Have a good night, counsel.
You, too. Have a great night. We're gonna move our, you know what? I didn't go to, did I go to the audience?
Yeah.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. All right, moving on to item number 16, which is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. This comes to us from the Engineering Department from Speedway LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the property located at 37416 Seven Mile Road. Mr. Lear?
Yeah, this is our typical agreement with Wayne County and the property owners on any new development, where they're discharging to a Wayne County system. Wayne County requires that we step in as an intermediate in case they don't do the work. We have an agreement to go and fix it for them and recoup charges. So this is our, just a standard maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Housekeeping item, counsel?
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving for consent. There's no objection, my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from counsel? Anything from the audience? We have an approving on consent. We'll move on to item number 17, which is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Livonia. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the reconstruction of West Chicago Road from Harrison, easterly 125 feet west of Inkster Road, with the city's proposed participation to be an estimated 18.15% in the amount of $374,845. Mr. Lear?
Yeah, this is actually kind of a nice one. We are getting money from MDOT to reconstruct our West Chicago from Harrison to pretty much Inkster. As part of the agreement, they are covering almost, well, we're covering $375,000. They're doing the rest of the $2 million out of that, so it's actually a pretty good deal. We're, we get a lot of bank fireback on this one.
That's a great deal. Vice President?
It sounds like a good deal, so we should jump on it. I'll offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. And then, just because, do, do you know, have any idea for the residents that are out there that live in the Clement Circle area? Any idea with road construction timing?
It's going to be done this year, so we're, we've gone out, they've got the bids back. I'm going to guess we're probably looking midsummer, early, early summer, midsummer to start and be finished up before, you know, the end of the year as well. Hopefully, we can get it finished up before school starts in this fall, but, you know, it's contractors and weather. You never can count on them sometimes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. And maybe keep us in the loop, and we can let our president of the Clement Circle Neighborhood Association know and get the word out.
Yep.
Anything else from counsel? Seeing none. Audience, seeing none. We have an approving on consent. So that concludes the study agenda. Is there any further audience communication for items that are not on the agenda? I do see a couple of people in the audience. Just wanted to make sure you don't want to say anything.
Mr. President, for the record, I just want to know, I will not be at the next meeting. I will be gone on a prior engagement I've already scheduled that will not be in the country. It will be in the warm, sunny skies of Mexico.
Unbelievable.
I did not know the timing, so.
I'd offer a denial.
We're not going to let that happen?
For the record, I will not be at next meeting, city council meeting, for the residents.
I guess it's going to be a party, then. What are you going to say? Jolly's got a dad joke coming. All right, I will give the motion to adjourn, but I want to point out that my younger brother decided to bring my daughter, who's nine, on a school night to city council, saying, "Thank you, appreciate it." With that note.
You get what you pay for.
I do. As Laura would say the closing, "Good night, Livonia."
That is funny, Jim, but no.